Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda, it's a continued public hearing, site plan review, six to eight, Turnpike Road, auto repair and retail, 9,000 square foot building, and continued public hearing, special permit for lower impact development, six to eight Turnpike Road slash auto repair and retail, 9,000 square foot building. There's been a few things that have changed since our last part of the public hearing. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Galvani and Mr. Sullivan to update the board and the public on those particular items that have changed, and then ask you to go through the project again.
Okay.
Good evening, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Galvani, I represent the owner and applicant, Six Turnpike Road LLC, Anthony Medry, owner and manager who was here tonight. As Mr. Morris indicated, there have been revisions made, we're going to update you, and obviously this will have to be continued for submission of some final revised plans. Mike Sullivan will update you on the status of the engineering plans and the review. We have had a revised landscape plan done, and our landscape architect, Steve Cosmos, is here, and Steve has the plan and can walk you through that. If there are any questions in terms of the building, our architect, Greg Buckingham, is here tonight to answer any questions on that. And our electrician, who's going to be handling the lighting plan and the fixtures, can show the board some proposed fixtures, we'll get into that in a few minutes. So with that, Mike, if you want to-
Sure.
...update the board.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike. Mike at the mic.
Mr. Chairman, is there a need to go over the proposal at all, or are we all up to speed on that and just start from where we left off?
If it was anyone else, Mr. Sullivan would definitely have to go over the whole thing from the beginning. However, your, you know, your presentations usually keep us pretty well caught up, but I would, for the purpose of the people at home, and any of the board members who can't remember too well, if you give us, you know, the quick rundown of what the facility is proposed to be and so on, and then get into the revisions. Thank you.
Cliff note version. It's an acre and a half, it's a zoned highway business. There were originally two houses on the property, one of them has been taken down, the other one is there but not occupied. The proposal is to construct a 9,000 square foot building. Tony Medry is the owner, he'll be doing auto repair on site on 6700 square feet, and it'd be 2,300 square feet that would be leased out within the building. We had to file with the Department of Transportation for both drainage and the entrance and exit. They have given their approval on the project. The parking requirement is 40 spaces in total, we show 41, so in full compliance with that part of the regulation. The drainage system would be a bio detention basin located in this area that would eventually flow out into the right of way and discharge where the current discharge from the state highway is located. Septic system is located here, witnessed by the Board of Health, haven't done the design yet. The dumpster will be hidden in the back part of the property. Utilities coming in, water will be to the rear, it will be a sprinkled building. The site distance is fine, without problem, and the lighting and the landscaping were big issues, even though there's a very good presentation made at the last meeting, there were some unanswered questions, so we have the professionals here that will answer that. What has changed since the last meeting? We received a letter from the town engineer, the town engineer is satisfied with the plan as submitted. We've had a discussion with Fussin O'Neil, discussed the items that were outlined in their letter that we talked about briefly at the last meeting. I think we're both on the same page. Having said that, you have not received any response from them, so we'll be hopefully presenting that to the board at the next meeting that will close out the drainage issues associated with that. The revisions that we have made after the discussion with Fussin O'Neil that we needed to take care of, there was only four, and they were minor. On this plan, the existing condition plan, they wanted the existing septic system shown that was servicing the house. There were a couple of cesspools, one here and one here, we've showed that on the plan. There was a parking space that didn't have the right dimensions, if you remember at the last meeting, we discussed that a little bit. That is located here, and they want that hatched. We had 42 with this shown last week, now it's 41, and as I just said, 40 is the requirement. And the only other revision, they wanted reinforced concrete pipe at this location because of the amount of fill over the pipe, and we've made that revision as well. So hopefully this will be the plan that you see next week, based on our conversation with Fussin O'Neil, but until we get that letter, I can't guarantee that. So with that, I'll turn it back to Paul. Steve?
Sure.
Steve Cosmos, landscape architect.
Thank you. So I received a design memo from Fussin O'Neil with some comments about the landscape plan. So between their comments and reworking to fulfill your bylaw requirements, we added quite a few plants this week to the plan. So you can see there's a small chart here where it does calculation based on the frontage for how many trees and shrubs are now proposed for the site. The other thing that I did notice in your bylaw was that you liked groupings of plants, so I rather than have the line of evenly spaced trees along here, I've clustered the trees, so we got groupings with shrubs beneath them. These edges all have shrubs lining them that'll get up eight feet at least, and then various trees along the back, we have zelkovas on each side, pears in the back, birches, red maples, and another cluster of birches. So I think the site's going to be beautifully planted, and should soften the proposed usage and building and all. Do you have any questions or comments on it?
Well, the next is going to be the lighting.
Okay.
And then we'll open it up to questions from the board.
Actually, why don't we get the, turn the plan around for the building, so Ken can show the... Okay. As a preface to what Ken indicated, Chairman, as you had noted, there were some wall packs shown, and we're getting away from those, the, what's important when you're looking at the building elevation is, it has an overhang of up to six feet, so, which is particularly significant in the back of the building as well. So what we're proposing for pedestrian safety, in particular, is to have some downlights under the overhangs. So that's one of the items that Ken Hayes is working on as well. So Ken, you can maybe indicate what type of fixtures you're looking at.
Okay. For the record, I'm Ken Hayes, Ken Hayes Electric, I live here in town, I'm lights electrician, I'll be doing the work at the facility at six to eight Turnpike Road. When I got the plans, I was asked to come up with something that would be not a wall pack onto the building, but either some other general lighting that would shine the walkways and entrance ways to the building. I'm going to propose you a couple of things, only because-
Need the microphone there, Ken?
I'm going to propose a few different options. We're trying to not only light the area of the building and the walkways, which would be underneath here, there'll be a concrete pad for the walkway about five to six feet wide. On the overhang, which would sit like this on the building, we could do multiple different things. We could cut recessed light into that soffit, so it gives it a zero effect on underneath the soffit itself, that it would be built into it. We could also go with what we call a vandal-proof fixture. This will shine more light down, not so much far as out, but down. The reason why I like this fixture, one, it's an LED fixture, so you're getting more bang for the buck, as far as you're getting more lumen output for a little wattage. So in that aspect, we're trying to make sure that we maintain a lumen output, but also maintain an energy efficient output. So I'm going to give this to pass through the board. The other option, when I looked at the plan, we could go with like a wall sconce scenario with that.
Hold on, Ken. We can cut that part short.
Okay.
Wall sconces.
Fine.
You may have seen them on other buildings on Route 9, but-
No, I have, and that's why-
Points of light that we're trying to reduce.
Okay.
I don't mean to cut you off, but-
No, that's, that's fine, that'll actually save a whole bunch of time. Like I said, at that point, if we're not going to go with a wall sconce type of fixture, the only other alternative is coming through the soffit or hanging it on the soffit below. One would be obviously recessed light in the soffit, the other one would be that vandal-type proof fixture where you're getting that lumen output to secure the entrance of the building, as far as a lumen output that people see it. The second part of that is the security output of lumen, so that the building is lit, but it's not lighting out as far as the neighborhood. As far as the parking lot lights are concerned, there was a standard layout for 10 pole lights that would sit no more than 20 feet up. They're just general parking lot lights with an LED built-in component to them. So they're not a high precious sodium where it's lighting up a, like a car lot at night. It's a downlight where it's lighting up the general area, but not lighting out the general area. Sorry, I just lost the... I'm going to pass this one around. It'd be this fixture here on a 15 to 20-foot pole, and that fixture there, the lumen output, I believe is 10,000 K. So you're not, it's not like a high precious sodium where the light goes infinite in all directions. This one is actually one that just shines down into the parking lot itself. So the lumen spread is to the parking lot and not to the neighborhood.
Is that adjustable?
Yes. You can, you can adjust the tilt, and I believe with that fixture, you can adjust the lumen. I know with the, underneath the soffit, there is a control that we can adjust the lumen from 100% lumen output down to 10%, and you can adjust that, just like with remote control.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Very good. Was there anything else, Paul?
No. I would add, in looking at the area, and I know the concern of not impacting any residential neighborhoods, I do not believe that there are any viewing angles that would impact any butters or even trap, or even just, you know, pass-by traffic. Don't forget, the back of the building, you have a fairly extensive area of warehouses and trailers behind it that go back quite a bit. If we, if we go to the east, six, the property line at Six Turnpike is actually the, excuse me, the Southborough Framingham Town Line. Beyond that is a 100-foot wide strip that's owned by now Eversource, that extends not only the length of the side lot line, but it extends quite a distance to the south. And then beyond that, you have the entrance to the 990 crossing. If you head in a westerly direction, again, industrial, you have the driving range directly across the street, the strip shopping centers, and I don't believe the angle, the elevations are such that it would be visible from any neighborhood beyond that. So we're looking for, obviously comply with the board's requirements, have sufficient lighting to be able to work here and to provide a reasonable level of security. So that's, that's essentially where we are at this point, and depending on the choice of the fixture, Ken can then make some revisions, and we'll do a resubmital on the lighting plan, so.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions and comments. Mrs. Bartolini.
I really don't have much. I really don't have much, I like the idea of the overhang and the recessed lighting in the, in the overhang. I'm still not crazy about traffic in and out, but we can talk about that later. But when I drove to the site a couple of times, not by design, just my life got me there, the, it reinforced my thought about traffic going in and out. If the people driving around me really knew what I was doing while I was driving, they ought to be worried, oh yeah, I got to think about that. Also, I was a little surprised at how, that I hadn't noticed it and had it in my recall, is how steep that Eversource land is.
It is.
It's steep and deep. Is it, is there going to be any fencing between that? I mean, if you've got customers coming in with cars and kids-
Little three-foot wall, stone wall.
There as well, good, all right.
Say what he said. Four feet wide stone.
Yeah. What he said to me was four feet wide stone wall. High, four feet high stone wall, which is, it makes it clear anyways for kids or a parent, that the kid's not supposed to be on the other side of the wall. So in general, I'm okay with it, and when you come back, maybe we can, I'm just concerned at the west end where the traffic will be, that it, someone's still going to try to get across there, trying to avoid going, going up that, that ramp.
I mean, that's why, Mike, Mike-
I don't think it would be possible either, but I, I was looking, I mean, it's, it's a bother to have to change direction there, because it takes so many lights to get through and stuff, so a driver's going to try it or think about it. It was lower on the ramp than I envisioned it being, so it was-
So the concern is at this point here?
I'm afraid they're going to try to-
You're concerned about the entrance?
I think they're going to try to go out the entrance, is my, is my thought.
Well, the entrance is located here, the median strip comes up to this point here. It would be quite a maneuver-
Okay.
-to make that, not to say someone won't try and do it, but it really-
You had a light at the top of the ramp.
We had a long conversation with DOT, and they were very concerned about that same maneuver, and with what we ultimately presented to them, they were perfectly satisfied in, both from a D cell perspective and also a situation that would preclude that maneuver into the flowing traffic.
Mr. Mills.
Thank you. I know I talked about it last time, the same thing Kathy said, just the entrance and the exit. Again, I drove it just because, same thing, it just happened to go that way, I think going to the airport. But, you know, looking at it, the speed and, again, my personal concern was just if I was to make that turn up there, would someone know that, they think I'm just taking the off-ramp and realize that I'm really slowing down to make that up there? You know, to make the turn into the location. That's, that's just me having-
The only thing I could say, Andrew, is that there's a driveway west of where we're going in, and to my knowledge, there hasn't been any major issues associated with that. Granted, there's not a heavy traffic flow going in there, and I'm not suggesting it is a high-flow business, but the many years that that has been in business, there haven't been any issues associated with that.
Yeah.
I understand and I hear what you're saying, but that for the property is the safest that you could get in there from.
Understood. And then back to the lighting a little bit, the soffits, can you show me again where you're thinking the lighting would be under the soffits? Would it continue underneath the, over the garage bays, or is it just under where I assume the office or retail space would be?
We could put them realistically anywhere. Depending upon the spread of light, we wouldn't want to overlap, but we wouldn't want to have dark areas as well. We'd want to make this continually lit.
Okay.
Those fixtures do come- Those fixtures do come, like I said, with a dimming capability. You can dim, you can have them full bright up to a hundred percent, down to ten. There's also, we could also have photo cell control on that, so it would be dusted dawn operation.
And would they continue around to the west end of the building?
I would imagine that they would continue around the total part of the building because we're gonna light up, I would imagine, the whole area of the building.
And the sign that shows above the garage base?
This here? At that point, if you, there's really not a, under the soffit light that you could put there, what we would probably propose would be a gooseneck type of fixture where the angle would be directly upon the, the sign itself and not a spread out. So the gooseneck would come out from the building and come down and back into the sign. And it would just illuminate the sign, not the building.
Is the intent to have just one sign or two signs?
Well, I would imagine that would depend on, on what the board would, would let happen. Obviously, there'll be a sign for the auto repair. Retail may or may not have a sign. If they do choose to, and it's approved by the planning board, we would generally use this type of fixture to illuminate that sign.
We would have, we would propose a tenant sign.
Tenant sign?
Yeah. So there would be two wall signs?
If a tenant is...
Right.
...required. So there's, so where I'm actually leading with this, there's no request for a sign out by the road? Is that correct?
This point, no.
Not at this point, but there will be down the road.
On the...
Down the road will be a sign outside, yes. I am not proposing one now. I haven't designed one.
Because I was looking at the landscape plan, I was wondering if you were gonna do a sign, how you were not gonna cover it up.
Possibly, yes. Is, is it doable?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I kinda hoped that we could put the sign in that front, flapping bed. I was thinking...
I was thinking it could go, the sign could go in this bed here, but I don't know what size sign or how, you know. I have nothing in front of me telling me, can I accommodate?
I'm not, I'm not advocating for one, I'm just wondering...
Yeah, no, I...
What the plan was.
I think he wants one, so...
At that point, if he does come up with a sign that's approved by the planning board, we could address that lighting issue when we get to there. Again, we could go to something similar as a gooseneck that would illuminate the sign, or if the sign is totally enclosed, we could illuminate that sign from the inside out. But those would be options at a later date. We can pre-wire for it now, but there's been no, there's nothing in the plans that say that at, at this point. But I'll propose that to the planning board as well.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks?
Do, do we know at this point how deep the soffit is? And is it consistent all the way around?
Yep. The proposed soffit, as it's shown here, is three feet. It runs all the way around the entire perimeter of the building, up here at sixteen feet, and here is at twelve feet above the finished concrete curbing walkway that runs around the entire building as well.
Is three feet deep?
It's three feet deep, yes. Projecting off of the building will be three feet.
Both feet soffit?
Yes.
I have... I think it's important that the lighting not be really noticeable from the street in front of the building. So is that what the plan is to just keep it back on the property?
Correct. That's my intention from the design, is to conceal the lighting within the soffit. And like was mentioned earlier with the different types of fixtures, that it would be recessed, so it would not be visible. Also, as it was mentioned, that the lighting to go around the entire perimeter, because the concrete walkway, there's gonna be ADA accessible ramps to get ADA visitors to the building. So it's important that the lighting goes around the entire perimeter to illuminate those ramps as well.
And is it dusted dawn lighting?
Correct, yes. I would assume it'd be set on a timer throughout the day in the season.
I have a question on the landscaping. And that is, did I hear correctly you were responding to Fussin' O'Neill comments?
Yes.
Is Fussin' O'Neill get into the landscaping?
They're comprehensive for us now because they have multi-staff, but they do all of the reviews.
My answer to, so this is, they're, they have a comprehensive staff, so we've hired them to do the whole review of projects.
And I didn't realize that. Okay. I think that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Question on the lighting. Are we at the point now where the, there's a plan for where the light poles are going to be positioned in the parking lot?
At this time, we have a general conception of where they're going to go throughout the property. And... I can get back to that.
I would, I would recommend, if you're going to illustrate something, I would suggest doing it on the, on a board. Maybe perhaps using, you know, just pointing on the board where they're...
It's actually easier for me to show you on this.
Okay.
And I'm, I don't mean to, to be rude, unfortunately.
Oh, it's for the public, I was thinking.
Okay. Where, where there's a dot on the, on the plan is where a pole is going to go. So there are ten of them in all, I believe.
We will be submitting revised plan with the pole locations and the fixture, with, and the cutoff with the fixtures.
All right. That's fair enough. Maybe, maybe it's a little premature then to have the discussion.
Right.
But we can have the discussion, I'm just, I'm just indicating, we, we'll be complying with.
Basically, they're gonna be, you know, around the, you know, the perimeter of the property.
And that type of fixture is the type that projects very much downward and reduces spill out.
Correct. That is correct. The, the aperture of the fixture actually shines straight down. So you're not getting that distant spread out of the property because the fixture itself is shining down into the parking lot itself.
And I do see, on your iPad or device, that there, at the far corners, there are fixtures as well, correct?
Correct.
The entrance and the exit.
Right. There, there'll be fixtures coming up and fixtures going out to illuminate the entrance and the exit of the building.
And how high are those?
The poles can range from fifteen to twenty feet. Twenty would definitely be the max that I would ever put in, just to keep that illumination spread down. The closer I can get that illumination spread to the parking lot, the less effect that it spreads out wide, it stays down like a spotlight.
Not to belabor this point, that, on the soffit lighting, that's, that is definitely recessed, right? There was no other, I could've sworn that, I heard you say it's either recessed or something else, but...
That particular fixture can be surface mounted.
But your intent was to...
My intent is to recess the fixtures.
Is there a reason why a, a person would do a, a surface mounting?
Easier to maintain.
Right.
And, you know, if anything goes wrong, you can service the fixture easier if it's surface mounted. The fixture itself, the dimensions were on that, they're two foot by, I believe, eight inches. So even on the underhang, if we mounted a surface fixture, the depth of it is minimal as far as aesthetic. I'd rather go recessed because I just think it's a cleaner, nicer look.
Agreed. That's it for me. Thanks.
Okay. I think you're, you're saying all the right things relative to where you're gonna go with the lighting, especially you counsel saying that you will be submitting revised plans. So you, the discussion here tonight is all moving in the right direction, but we're hearing from the questions and the answers that there's still information that's lacking. For example, the signage. You know, Fussin' O'Neill, when they get these plans, they're going to go through the zoning code, and they're going to see under landscaping to see if you've complied. They're gonna look through the lighting to see if you've complied. And the sign section, there's a, there's, you know, every, every facility on, on Route Nine has a certain number of square feet that they're allowed for signage, individually or cumulatively. So your, the, the discussion about signs, while you might have a, a sign down, down by the road, or you might not, not sure where it's gonna be, not sure how it's gonna be lit, all of that, Fussin' O'Neill is just gonna respond back and say, we don't have enough information to, to say that, that it's okay. There's already, these are traffic signs, I believe, but we have a, on the plan here on sheet three of seven, it says entrance sign. And I'm sure that sign means enter. And then a little bit up the road, up the, the parking lot, it says, there's two more, there's one more sign, two more signs, it says no parking unless that's on the pavement. No, it says sign, no parking, fire lane. And then just a little bit up the road, it says, up the driveway, it says do not enter sign. So you've got three signs between Route Nine and the parking lot already. Then you're gonna have one in the building, and you may have one down on Route Nine. All of which might be fine, but you've gotta keep track of the square footage of the signs and then the type of illumination. I think that the, that overhang light that you're describing is, would be consistent with the, the general zoning requirements, which is to try to not have the light source visible. You, you wanna light up the area for security and for safety, but you can do that without having the light source visible. And that's why, when you mentioned the wall sconces, I mean, those are, those are points of light that do light things up, but for the most part, they just light themselves up. And it's more points of light. So you really have to go through the, the, the code and see to what extent you've complied. I, I agree, we've had, you know, over the years, we've had other dealerships on Route Nine, we've had vehicle repair facilities, and we've heard stories of, you know, even in well-lit lots, having car parts and tires and components taken away, you know, vandalized or stolen. So for this type of facility, you're gonna have vehicles outside overnight, it is important to have adequate lighting for security. And of course, you're gonna have a lot of people coming and going, and so for safety reasons, you wanna make sure it's properly lit. But again, you have to, and Route Nine is the, you know, is the maximum area in town where you can have lights and, and, you know, the, the height of the fixtures and so on. Again, you have to refer to the code because that's what the plan that you submit is gonna be compared with by Fussin' O'Neill and this board. And we're gonna rely on Fussin' O'Neill to guide us in, in any areas that you're exceeding, you know, what's, what's allowed on Route Nine. And you're not the only ones on Route Nine. Everyone else on Route Nine watches everyone else to see what they can get away with and so on. So we wanna make sure it's, it's done properly within the code, and if there's some exceptions that you're asking for, there is that unique feature of this location which has to do with that ramp. And if there's something associated with that, I think the board has already kind of indicated that that's a point of interest beyond what we normally would see maybe somewhere else on Route Nine. So I guess I'll open it up to anybody in the, in the audience that wants to have any questions or comments? Anyone? So do you, after this discussion tonight, have a feel for when the comprehensive plans would be completed? Obviously, they have to be coordinated. If the landscape designer gets, you know, if there's, if the signage decision is made, how is that sign gonna be landscaped and how's it gonna be illuminated? And so on. So it's a, it's a coordinated effort, and it seems like it's all coming together. But do you have a feel for when, when that may be?
Well, the landscape plan is completed. If we, if he has to make any adjustments, we can do that, I think, very quickly. Certainly show the proposed square footage of wall signage, the proposed dimensions, which I believe are necessary. Landscaping is done. I guess Mike Sullivan's just waiting for Fussin' O'Neill to, to get back to him on, on some of the details of the site.
We will not hold anything up. I, I don't think there's gonna be a lot that has to be done, Mr. Chairman. So I, I understand that you're...
Yeah, I need a microphone there, Mike. Sorry.
You need everything filed by Tuesday prior to the meeting, if I'm not mistaken?
Sounds, sounds right.
That was a question.
Sounds right.
Okay.
It doesn't seem to be...
I see no, no reason that we wouldn't be able, as a group, get something submitted so that we can hopefully button it up at the next meeting. So that, we, that would be our intent, to have something filed the Tuesday prior to the next meeting.
Okay. Looking at the plan and the plan that I have in front of me from the last meeting, and I think this was discussed at the last meeting, could you put the, the floor, you know, the, the plan that shows the footprint of the building? Yeah. I'm not gonna do the building inspector's job. This says nine thousand square feet, and I didn't do the dimensions here, but the way I remember it, I could be wrong, is that they measure the dimension of the, not just the footprint of the, or they, they measure the footprint of the building based on the, the size of the roof. I'm not sure if you've calculated it that way or if that makes any difference, but if you have, if you have these overhangs, I believe the overhang is the, is the, considered the outside dimension of the building, not the actual walls. I just, I, I don't, there's no, I just, when I heard about the overhangs, that can add up.
We've never, in terms of, from our end of it, in terms of parking and hydraulic loading on the septic system, we've never used anything other than the interior of the building. I will check with the building inspector to confirm, and if we need to revise something, we'll certainly do so. But, but that, that nine thousand does not include the, the three foot around the perimeter.
Right. And I think that the board, I mean, when you showed that elevation, the rendering, it's a pretty attractive-looking building. We can't, we can't, we don't regulate, you know, the, the appearance of the building, but architecturally, it seems to be excellent. And the overhang part is architecturally pretty nice, but it also helps us, helps everyone with the, with the respect to the lighting, having them, having it recessed.
We, we will check that out, Mr. Chairman.
But you're not, you're not on the, on the bubble as far as the size of the building, are you?
No.
All right. So that, it, it, I just brought that up because... Because of the, the dimensions of the, what's shown here is the, the walls of the building rather than the, than the, the roof.
Well, that would be, that would add another, what, four fifty, nine hundred, one eighty, nine hundred and three sixty? So that would be another, that would be another three parking spaces approximately, two to three parking spaces. It makes no sense why we'd need parking for that, but we'll certainly check that out and, and address it.
Right. And if that's the case, then... And if that's the case, then, you know, you'd come to the board and say, "Can you waive those three parking spaces?" There's, there's facilities all along Route 9 in South Pro where the physical parking spaces is much less than the requirement. The space is available, but it's not paved, it's grassed over because the, whoever's there says, "We don't need, we don't need all those spaces." And in this case, you know, the board would look at that, keep an open mind relative to keeping the 41 spaces, as you've shown, and, and not factoring in the roof. Mrs. Bartolini.
Just for, for my personal clarification, the comment was made it should be ready for the next meeting. So you're saying March 28th? Today's the 21st. Pardon?
The next meeting you'd be on.
Which is April 4th.
Yes.
Okay. Either the 28th or the 4th, I am not here. So I just want to make sure that we have the right number of people present to be able to vote. Are any of these special permits?
Well, we have the LED special.
LED, LID. Yeah, LID.
LID special permit.
Okay. I'm hearing, Mr. Mills just said to me, he doesn't think he's here either, based upon work commitment. So I want to, I'm just wanting, let's lay it out and figure, figure out when we want to say we'll do this and for any extensions are needed on the, you know, review time, that we either do that or we put something extra on a meeting date that you would be here. But I, I don't usually miss meetings, but the 28th and the 4th, I'm going to be out of town for, for vacation. Out of the country for a vacation.
Well, we certainly...
It was a gift.
Certainly can't schedule it if there's only three of you here.
Right. That's why I brought it up.
For certain. Well, I'm glad you did bring it up, so.
Back to the details of the building. And I think that this one, you guys went over this last time, but I either don't remember or I was pulled away. Could, again, it shows the, the 27, on sheet three of seven, it shows the line between the 2,000 square foot retail space and the 6,300 square foot service station space. And then on the rendering, it shows different height of the overhang to kind of separate those. And also the window arrangement is a little bit different. So the 2,000 square, 2,700 square foot is basically generic space that would accommodate a variety of different tenants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then let's go over to the 6,300. Could you put the rendering back up, please? And I, I thought you went through this, but I'm just not remembering about where the garage doors are, where the bays are and how it operates. Do they, are there bays on the front and the back? Are those fixed windows?
So just to kind of walk you through the elevation, as you were saying. So the stepping in the roof, basically the six, the five, five bays here in the front will be what will be occupied by Tony to perform the automotive services. In the back of the building, these three here, it's basically a drive-through. So these two do not drive-through. These three here to the furthest west drive through the back. So in the back of the building, there'll be three additional bays for the drive-through of those two front bays. The idea is Tony can, you know, take a customer's car and then be able to take them out of the climate and take on the car and give the keys off and be able to drive through to the back. And then to clarify, the stepping in the roof, the stepping in the roof, this, this part of the building is hired to achieve the lifts inside the building. It's a, it meets the minimum requirement for the, the lifts on the inside. The entrance, basically the main entrance to the auto care facility would be this storefront right here. And that basically, when you go into that storefront, it consists of a waiting area where people can wait while their car is being worked on. There'll be the restrooms, all those facilities for the public, basically. The storefront over here is for the future tenant. And there's an access entrance from the main front and then as well as to the side. And as you mentioned, that would basically be, you know, any kind of retailer, future tenant, which we don't know at the moment what the exact use will be. But that'll basically be their designated storefront and entries.
So those windows on the, on the left are actually garage doors? Those five are garage doors?
Yes, sorry. The, these five are the garage bay doors. And then these are the two storefront entries from the front. And then that's from the side, the storefront entry.
So then in the back, we have three garage doors?
Correct. That align with these first three.
And then the other two, are they just windows back there or solid wall?
Solid wall.
And behind the retail space?
Behind the entire lower block of the building, that's all solid wall in the back.
Solid wall.
Might be a egress door, you know, exit, but emergency exit, but no, no bays or anything like that, solid wall.
I saw on the plan that it shows a loading area, which is by that, those two, the two bays that are only one way in.
Loading area?
It's in the back of the building, it says, loading zone. Oh, actually, it's the whole, it's the whole retail area. Yeah, I see. Okay. All right. So if there, does anybody else have any seconds? Otherwise, we'll talk about when we can get back together. So Mr. Galvani, you've submitted a request for a continuation and an extension of the public hearing tonight to extend it until April 28th, 2016, which is also the, the time limit on the lower impact development special permit. Those approval durations are different in Selpro. One's for site plan is shorter than the one for the lower impact development. So currently, that is at, at April 28th.
So what would be the next available meeting after the 4th?
That's what I'm, I'm going to check because we have town meeting. We meet on the 25th and that agenda is open right now. So we could have you come back at 7:00 PM on the 25th, if that's, if that's acceptable. So first, I would need a, a motion to grant the proponents' request to extend the approval period to April 28th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the review and approval period to April 28th for the auto repair and retail establishment proposed for 6 to 8 Turnpike Road.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. So the, the approval period is now, is extended for the, to April 28th. And now we'd need a motion to continue the public hearing to April 25th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the planning board extend this public hearing to April 25th at 7:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing the permit requests for auto and retail establishment at 6 to 8 Turnpike Road.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. We'll see you on the 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see it's two minutes before our next agenda item. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? All right. Very good. See you in two minutes. Planning Board is back in session after a two-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing, St. Mark's Solar Energy Array. Our agenda says to be continued to April 4th, 2016, per applicant request. We have a letter from Myrick and O'Connell. Thought I saw the attorney here. Brian Falk, to the Chairman, Planning Board. On behalf of my client, St. Mark's School of Selpro, I hereby request a further continuation of the public hearing on St. Mark's application for site plan approval. Following the public hearing session held on March 7th, 2016, it became apparent that several key personnel from St. Mark's project team will be unavailable on March 21st, the planned date of the next public hearing session. I respectfully request that the Planning Board take no action on St. Mark's application on March 21st, 2016, other than to continue the public hearing to Monday, April 4th, 2016, at a time of the Planning Board's choosing. In addition, I respectfully request a further extension of the time for the Planning Board to act on the St. Mark's application for site plan approval to Friday, April 8th, 2016. Okay. In addition, St. Mark's will hold a site visit on Saturday, April 2nd, between 10:00 AM and 12:30 PM. Anyone interested in attending may reach the project site using the access driveway off of Sears Road across from the southern outlet of Sadie Hut Lane. St. Mark's will leave the driveway's gate open during the site visit. Representatives of St. Mark's project team will be available to answer questions. Polls topped with balloons approximating the height of the proposed solar panels will be placed along the western edge of the project site, adjacent to the access driveway. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Very truly yours, Brian Falk. So going back to the request for the extension of time, the current St. Mark's Solar Array Major Site Plan Review period deadline is March 23rd and they're requesting it be extended to April 8th. Mrs. Bartolini. Okay, thank you.
Before we do any motioning about when we're, you know, what, when we want to hear this and when we want, therefore, the extension for approval time handled, once again, Mr. Mills and I would like to point out that we're not here on April 4th. So will that have an impact? Is that a straight, I believe in this case, it's a straight, simple majority. They only need the three votes as opposed to a super majority.
Didn't they, didn't they delay it before though? Because we didn't have all members.
The first time that we were going to open it, I was out sick and you had work responsibilities and, and they didn't want to go forward with just the three.
So even though the public hearing was opened, there was no action taken?
Correct.
So that's not considered...
We didn't miss anything.
You didn't miss anything.
No, no. We're fine on that. We didn't miss anything. And besides, I was watching on TV and could have signed an affidavit that I'd kept my eligibility. But at the time they wrote their letter of request for the evening to appear and the, and the time to extend the review to, they were unaware that, once again, two out of the five members were not going to be available. You think that will change? Because that means they need, what, for those looking saying, well, they can still do it, it means they need a unanimous vote. Well, they would need a unanimous vote for one thing, but we, we'd have only three people there. But they'd need a unanimous of the three.
Well, based on this request to extend the approval period to April 4th, I'm sorry, April 8th, this board could take action on that since we meet twice between now and then. The Planning Board does. And... And then on, and then if, if, if the Planning Board votes to grant the extension to April 8th and then we're, then we would be allowed to, to take a vote to continue the public hearing to April 4th. On April 4th, St. Mark's would have a choice of proceeding on April 4th with two members missing or to request that the hearing be continued again with no action.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the South Pro Planning Board agreed to, to the request from St. Mark's to extend the review and approval time for their solar project to April 28th. I mean, I'm sorry, April 8th. Is there a particular, no, I don't need a time for that, just for April 8th.
Business day, right. Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. So now we've appro, we've approved the continued, the extended approval period, which now allows us to continue the hearing per their request, continue the hearing with no action tonight to April 4th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the South Pro Planning Board approve, per the request of St. Mark's, that the public hearing will continue until April 4th at 7:00 PM for discussion of the solar proposal on their campus.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Very good. That takes care of that one for tonight. That takes care of that one for tonight. The next item on the agenda is an approval not required for 333, 337 Turnpike Road. Is that you, Bruce? No, your, your Flag Road. Yes, sir. It's this one. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mark Benson from Beals &amp; Thomas.
Okay. Hillary told me we'd see you tonight.
Yeah.
Why don't we put this on the table, and you can come up with your microphone and tell us what this one's all about.
Okay, this is a property at 333, 337 Turnpike Road. Existing property has two separate buildings on it. We're putting an A&R line, dividing the two properties. Their client has a buyer, definitely lined up for one of them to, for a purchase.
Could you show us the current lot line?
The current lot line is all the way over here.
And what's the new?
The new line is here. We're splitting the, the two septic systems for the, for the lots.
I'll open this up to the Planning Board for questions. Mr. Stein?
Have you reviewed the town code to ensure the proper frontage is in place and it meets?
Yes, we did. We have a table on the plan. We, we meet all of the requirements.
I have no further questions. Mr. Jenks?
Can you, I can't see the plan. Can you tell me what the frontages are on the two properties?
Sure. The 333 address has 734.60, and the 337 property has 530.03.
Okay, and they both have curb cuts now and driveways in to those, both of the buildings?
Not on each lot, but we have existing curb cuts coming in and one coming out, and we're providing an access and maintenance easement.
I have no further questions.
Can I have clarif, can hit me? Can I have clarification? Currently, the curb cuts for those, that, I consider it one building, but I guess it's not. The, it's one in and one out, and the use currently is Clark University?
Yeah, I believe they're a tenant for 333, and 337, I'm not sure, but that's, some, some part of that is Warehouse.
And when we split the lots, will you need to construct new curb cuts to still continue one in and one out for each site? Or are you proposing to convert one of them for each, each lot?
No, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep the access the same.
One way out.
And this thick dash line is a access and maintenance easement. So, so the, the tenants of this lot have the right to access from the other lot, and this lot has the rights to exit through this lot.
Well, I've had the opportunity to be at the facility a couple, well, several times for different training sessions that are held there. On days where Clark uses it for these training sessions, and say, in conjunction with our town, or with the Chamber, et cetera, this lot, this parking lot, for instance, in this one fills up pretty quickly. If we later get two different uses for these buildings that have an increase in traffic without having addressed this, but it's an A&R, so I can't address that anyways, so I'm out, I'm out of line. So I'll just look at this as an A&R. I was already thinking ahead. I was planning.
Mr. Mills?
I have no questions.
Do you know if the building inspector has reviewed this? The zoning enforcement officer at Salpro?
I don't know.
I forgot to ask that today. I was, my concern is, I know with an A&R, we are concerned about frontage area and access. I'm just wondering, and maybe you can help with this, if by creating two separate lots, that new line that you're creating cuts through a parking lot. Is that a shared parking lot? Does the line, are all the parking spaces on that side of the line assigned to that 333 building, and therefore, the total is, complies, and then likewise, on the other side of the line? Or are we, by separating the lots, creating a, a new non-conforming site plan, a new non-conforming facility?
Right. We've, we've done the parking counts strictly as the lots, the spaces per lot, and the spaces that the lot line is going through, we've, we've not counted those, because it's not a full space on either lot. So the parking counts are within the tolerances for the zoning.
For the size of the building and the zoning?
Right. And in addition, this owner wanted his count to go up, so they're, they've got a parking easement. The client wanted a parking easement over here. So I'm, I'm assuming they would do it with signage out there, spaces available for...
You know, I guess how they manage it as neighbors, future new neighbors, is up to them. But once that line is created, and if one lot is sold, and they don't even talk to each other, we just want to make sure that individually, they comply with the zoning after we draw this line. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm gonna recommend that they take this to the zoning enforcement officer. It's a, it's a complicated plan with a lot on it, and I don't, I, I think we ought to be assured that we are not creating anything non-conforming by approving this.
We're gonna meet again next week, and then the following week. If we're able to get some guidance from the zoning officer after he looks at this, does that impact your timeline?
No, I mean, our, our client will, you know, do whatever it takes. Just one thing, I don't know if it matters, but in 2007, we did a, a very similar plan, which was signed by the board. I have a copy here, but it was basically, the, the line was more in this general area. And the client never recorded the plan at the registry, and so, whatever, eight, nine years later, they wanted to re, rework things and, and get another A&R before you.
So what, what, what I'll do then, if this is okay with the board, is I'll take the plan and make sure that the zoning enforcement officer sees it. Tell him of the existence of the 2007 A&R. That may help him, it may, it may be completely irrelevant, but if he's, if he's interested in seeing that, then he can contact you.
Mm-hmm.
And then depending on how that goes, we would put that on either our next meeting's agenda, or the one which is on the 28th, or April 4th. It would prob, more, more likely be on the 20, on the April 4th meeting. And you say that that's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'll check the, yes, Mr. Stein?
What's, who's currently occupying these buildings, and what are they being used for?
333 is, I, I believe it's, it's through leases. I believe it's Clark, Clark University.
And 337?
And I'm not sure about the other one. I know, I know it is partial warehouse.
Thanks. Very good. We'll, through Hillary, we'll get back to you on, on our progress on what we talked about tonight.
Okay. And I can leave that other plan with you now, if you...
What's the other one, the '07 one?
The '07 one, right.
Oh, sure, that'd be good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. You'll hear from Hillary. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required, 15 Flag Road. Mr. Salak?
Good evening.
Before you get into what we want to do tonight, if you could update us, or kind of review how we, what we did before, and how it's transitioned to this?
Okay. Last time we were here, it was actually in October.
We want to make sure that everybody knows exactly who you are.
Okay. All right. For the record, my name is Bruce Salak from Bruce Salak &amp; Associates. We're a civil engineering and land surveying company in Marlboro. We did the A&R plan that's before you. The, tonight we're here for, it's confirmation applica, application. On October 28th, the board signed a plan. It was a land court plan, if you recall. We had a letter from the attorney, Mark Tilden, at the time, explanatory letter. The applicant, that plan was signed. The plan that you see before you tonight is a, is a, a similar plan, it's almost exactly the same, with the exception of some formatting changes. The reason for the formatting changes are that since the land court plan was signed, the owners of the property chose to deregister the land from land court. So that parcel of land, a five-acre parcel of land, is no longer land courted. Going forward, they are going to go to the Registry of Deeds now, because the land cannot be filed with the land court. It can only be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, since the plan was originally a land court for, land court filing, land court filing plan cannot be registered at the Registry of Deeds, primarily because of the formatting changes. So you have the, the same plan before you tonight, showing the two same lots. They're identical. The only difference is that the, the formatting changed on the title block that, and some of the notes that were, a special notes that the land court requires. The certification's a little different, and the, the title is a little different, because the differences between the Registry of Deeds and the land court requirements. So that's in summary why, why we're here tonight. There's also a, you have a letter dated March 11th, 2016, from Mark Tilden. He is the attorney for the owner, and he, he kind of explains that in so many words, what I just explained to you. Made the request on behalf of the owners to have that same plan signed again, so that it can go into the Registry of Deeds.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks?
I think this is pretty standard, fair. We, we have already looked at this in terms of it qualifying as an A&R. One additional item is, I would suggest that we waive the fee for, just essentially, we're just signing a plan again.
I'm one-dimensional. I can only do one thing at a time, I'm sorry. Mr. Jenks?
I'm suggesting that this is, that we've already reviewed this for its qualification as an A&R. We endorse the plan, and this is just a procedure that will allow them to record this at the registry. I recommend that we approve it, and, yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the A&R plan before us, and I'll also move that we waive any fees that might be involved in submitting the A&R.
Second? So it's a combined motion?
Sure.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Very good, and easy one, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will, we will keep moving, and I, I have the A&R here. We keep it until it's filed with the clerk anyway, so before we go home tonight, we'll, we'll endorse the A&R in the Form A. The next item on the agenda is in one minute. We're actually ahead of schedule. Be right with you.
While we're getting ready for that, Park Central is something that I'm recused from, and the next, the minutes aren't going to be addressed until after, but there are some issues concerning, you know, head counts at meetings and things of that nature, so is there any chance, I don't want to hold it up with people here, so do we want to take, and I'm not here on the 28th, so it's been a lot of time trying to get them straight, straightened out, but...
Had a long talk with Hillary today about the minutes.
Yeah.
We realize that there's, there's some here that haven't been approved.
But we've tried.
And definitely tried. And there's a further complication. The ones that have been approved, we try to get on the website right away, and she's explained to me how there's more than one or two people that have spent quite a bit of time attempting to get these, the minutes on the website, and it has to do with the changing technology, and people's rights and abilities to put these minutes onto the Salpro website. these minutes onto the South Row website. I'm being told that it's definitely being worked, but there is a point here where we're not putting, we haven't been able to put the meeting minutes on the website as quickly as we had in the past. I do believe, though, that there was an informal study done recently and I think the planning board was among the best in the town departments as far as getting our minutes out there. And we're proud of that and we'll continue to work to make sure the minutes get approved and put on the website as soon as we can. So now it's, I see it's 8:30. Did you want to take that with you over and sign it or?
Yeah, I'll take it over in the corner and sign it and bring it back to you, how's that?
So this is the...
Is it just one piece of paper I have to sign?
No.
Of course not.
There's the Form, Form A.
Form A?
One Mylar. And then the two paper.
Oh, you have two of them?
Should be two.
Two paper, one Mylar.
Oh, wait, the two papers are here.
Okay, I was gonna say, this didn't look like it, that's... I gotta come back.
Next item on the agenda is... Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four to zero, we'll see you in two minutes. Planning Board is back in session. During the two-minute recess, there was a brief delay, not delay, but there was a brief discussion, making sure that the member who recused herself was not physically in the room. She was signing some papers, so we waited for her to sign the papers and then she just left. So that's what we did during the two-minute recess. Does anyone here have any questions or comments relative to the two-minute recess? Very good. The next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission to discuss the Park Central. That's the way it's written here on our agenda. So we welcome the Conservation Commission. I'm going to ask Mark to, well, have the Conservation Commission introduce ourselves, even though we have the nameplates here. I'm Don Morris on the Planning Board.
Andrew Mills.
Phil Jenks.
Jesse Stein.
And Mark, do the same thing for the Conservation Commission and Beth, and then ask you to, you know, explain to us and the public, you know, why you're here, why we're here together and we'll move on from there. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mark Passamato, current Chair, South Row Conservation Commission.
Ben Smith.
Carl Guyer.
Russell Gregory.
Beth Rosenbloom, I'm the Conservation Administrator.
Dan Delaney with Fussin' O'Neil, the consultant for the town.
So I guess what brings us together is at our last meeting, we had an agenda item to discuss at the Conservation Commission, the recent waivers granted by the zoning board on Park Central for the town stormwater bylaw and the wetlands town bylaw, which was requested and granted on a meeting I believe was February 24th. And we had some discussion about that of that meeting and decision as a board and we were also, had Mr. Jenks at that meeting and Mr. Stein was at that meeting as well. Pretty much there to, I don't put words in your mouth, but pretty much there to listen to our discussion on the matter and what we were going to do or not do about that. So one thing, to be clear, is that currently the Conservation Commission does not have a request for any sort of permit from Park Central. We don't have a notice of intent request in front of us, we don't have any plans or site plans or anything that they've currently petitioned a permit from us on. We have sat on and issued a ANRAD for the resource area delineation of the site. So that was a process where they came and asked for agreement to where all the resource, resources were on the site, in other words agreeing to the wetland lines on, you know, the 101 acre site, thereabouts. So that was a process they went through, a number of meetings, site walks. Our consultant, Lucas Environmental, spent a number of days up there walking with Scott Goddard, their consultant, and agreeing to the wetlands and so forth. And that ANRAD has been issued to them. That basically just says, you know, this is what's wet and this is what's not. Now, at some point, we believe that they'll be in front of us with a notice of intent for the State Wetlands Protection Act, which also carries with it the stormwater policy. But the actions of the zoning board under their 40B power on the 24th, where they granted them the waiver of the stormwater town bylaw and the town wetland bylaw, they don't need to file for those with us at this point. So we have not yet issued a response back to them, the zoning board that is, with respect to that decision. We were invited to meet with you folks here tonight, so here we are. We do have a quorum of four members here. We do have a draft letter with us and depending on how our discussion goes tonight, we'll make a determination whether or not we decide to vote on that letter as written and send it, or modify and send it, or what we actually do with it.
So the sections, at that last, the ZBA meeting, the, well, I guess procedurally there was some concerns. From what I understand and what was handed to me after the meeting, the ZBA meeting, the, there was a draft or there was an initial letter from the proponent requesting waivers. I believe that was dated February 16th. And then there was another letter, another draft letter, almost exactly the same, that was dated a few days later. And then the third letter is the one that was actually presented and discussed at the February 24th ZBA meeting. Now procedurally, the ZBA had possession of those letters and they didn't share them with your board or our board. And then if you looked at the agenda for that night, it's completely silent relative to any type of waiver request. Is that the way, are you aware of that? Did you want to speak to that at all? Because that's a, again, that's a procedural, certainly a procedural error, if not a, you know, something that's hard to explain.
Well, certainly, certainly, you know, the Conservation Commission as a board was unaware that the meeting on the 24th, there was going to be any sort of discussion on waivers that pertain to our oversight. You know, I can't say that it was clear on the agenda that that was the case. Looking back at the videotape of that evening, it was, I think, rather late. It was close to 11 o'clock hour, if not after 11 o'clock hour where that matter was taken up and dealt with, so, you know, it gets a little late in the evening for some of that stuff. But the only other, you know, maybe inkling that there could be a potential request for waivers was done way back when we first started formally talking about the ANRAD. And there was some casual comment made by the applicant that that might be something that they'd be seeking. But there wasn't anything formally put in front of us to say that, you know, they were going to be seeking a waiver. Did the Conservation Commission have any comments with respect to that? Without having a plan in front of us, I think the comments that we probably would have provided back to them, I can't speak for the whole board, but it probably would have been something like, well, we would like to have, you know, taken a look at the plans and what's going on and before we, you know, issue any sort of formal comment with respect to, you know, entertaining any waivers.
So...
Any other timeline comments, no?
Other than we had included, actually, in a memo that we wrote back in December, in a memo that the Commission sent to the ZBA back in December, we did indicate that we wanted an opportunity to comment on any requested waivers prior to them being decided on. And we also put comments to that effect in the ENF document that we submitted to MEPA.
So if I have this right, there were two sections of the zoning code that were voted on, on the 24th. One was section 174-13.4, which is water resource protection. And that states that the special permit granting authority shall be the Board of Appeals. So it would seem that they were within their rights to waive their own special permit since they were the assigned granting authority. The other vote that they took was relative to 174-13.5, which is stormwater and erosion control. And it says, "The Conservation Commission shall be the permit granting authority for the issuance of a stormwater and erosion control permit and administer, implement, and enforce this bylaw." And they voted to waive that. That's your big concern. And I heard you say that you have a letter, but I think, I'll ask a question, I want to open it up to the rest of the board and your board. But do you, does the Conservation Commission feel that, you know, regardless of the fact that it wasn't on the agenda, that the information was not shared with you and the vote was taken without any comments or your ability to comment on it, do you guys think that the ZBA has the authority to waive that section beyond the 40B project? Jack?
Ben Smith. And I'm certainly willing to be proven wrong on it and I'd love to hear a legal rationale for the decision to apply it project-wide. But my understanding is that the, the 40B exemptions apply to the 180-some-odd 40B apartments into the infrastructure needed to support it, the roads, water mains, sewage disposal system. But the 140 townhouses in assisted living and hotel, I just, I can't, I can't figure out why the 40B exemptions would apply to that part of the project. I would love to hear the legal rationale that supports that decision.
Mr. Jenks?
That's what I found to be the most confusing part of Mr. De Petri's letter to the ZBA dated February 24th, talking about... letter to the ZBA dated February 24th, talking about the waivers. But before I get to that, I want to make a correction in something I have said in it. Frankly, I just found the wording of his letter confusing. And in one part, his letter says, "Unless otherwise indicated, waiver of the entire section noted is requested." He's talking about the various regulations. Subject to such reasonable conditions as the Board, the ZBA, may impose. The way I read this the first time through, the bold heading on this was chapter 174 of the code, sections 171, 174-1 through 17428, which is the total zoning code. And I said, "They're looking for a waiver from the total zoning code." I'm wrong. And I've gone through the letter several times. And I think they're looking, in this part of their request, they're looking for a complete waiver of compliance with Article 3, which is the use variances. And that's only seven and a half sections of the zoning code, not 27, which I think I had said they were looking to waive. And I just, I wanted to publicly correct my error. Getting back to the letter and what I think is the most confusing part of these waivers, I, again, I hope I'm reading it correctly, but I think they're asking for these waivers to apply to the total project, the 40B and the 40A, or Townhouse Project. And they're now calling this an integrated site development. And they're asking for the waivers on both the 40B and 40A. And it says, "And so as to allow for integrated site development as required," and that's in italics, "by the Board in its May 27, 2015 Notice of Decision on a Use Variance." I, I don't, I can't find a way to read that Notice of Decision on a Use Variance that requires these two pieces of the overall project to be put together and governed by 40B regulations. I may be early on this, Mr. Chairman, but I, am I correct that we also do not have any official requests before this Board dealing with the 40A project? It's kind of confusing in that they gave us a set of site plan drawings that were, I think they said were at a 70% level of completion. And those were for the total site. And I happen to think that's not inappropriate to do that planning for the total site. I do think it's inappropriate to regulate that total site under the 40B regulations. And at some point, I would like to formally, I would ask the Planning Board to formally request legal justification from the ZBA that they're acting under in treating this as a total 40B project.
So I think you asked a question initially if we had, if the Planning Board had a submittal before it. And I believe you're correct that we do not. Yes, we did receive a set of plans that are far from complete. And we only received those, well, I guess I won't say how we received them, but we have them. But again, I think like the Conservation Commission, we do not have a formal submittal before us. However, for the last, at least 14 or 15 months, the Planning Board has attended and watched the ZBA work its way to and through the use variance process. And then now working its way through, you know, the traffic and some of the wetlands issues, all of which I think this Board has paid close attention to. It was at least 14 months ago, the Planning Board submitted a letter to the ZBA requesting that they do not overreach their authority and that the Planning Board was willing and able to support the project as a team with the ZBA to make sure it was the best for the town and for the proponent. We sent three other, three additional letters to the ZBA. At least two of them, again, cautioned and requested that the ZBA remain with, understand what its authority is and remain within it and not overreach into other Boards' authority. And of course, under the use variance, the waiving of 174-10, which is the site plan, we felt and still do feel, and this was, this is nine months ago, eight or nine months ago, that we've been discussing this overreaching and that, the validity of that waiver relative to the site plan. And now, most recently, the ZBA has crossed over into your jurisdiction. And second thing that Mr. Jenks said about, you know, requesting some type of, you know, legal justification for this. As you may know, the Planning Board has discussed obtaining special counsel. We've discussed that and have put that on hold for a time, but it's still on the table because we just can't get past the understanding of the legality of what the ZBA has done relative to crossing over into others' jurisdiction. So I think that's part of, you know, the plan from tonight on. I'll ask the other members of the Board if they have anything to say. Mr. Mills, any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Stein?
Mr. Morris, do you recall, I was at a ZBA meeting that you attended as well. Was that on February 24th, when we talked about the feasibility study? And then I left, you stayed, and that's when they reviewed these waivers in question. Do you recall at that meeting, Mr. Bartolini, I asked about residual site plan review, how that was defined? And he spoke to landscaping, parking...
Sidewalks.
Thank you. But in this letter, which was subsequently, I think it was part of this meeting, although they didn't vote on site plan. I believe that it's specifically waiving exactly those components that were mentioned. The only reason I bring this up is it really illustrates how confusing this process has been, at least for me, when I ask a question at a meeting. And then literally an hour later, they're basically alluding to waiving the very components that they said were part of the residual site plan review. So I just wanted to kind of put it out there that when it's this complicated, I feel like we, as, myself as a Board member, I feel backed into a corner legally. And I think, you know, we're left with very little recourse other than to seek out another opinion, like special counsel.
Mr. Jenks?
I just want to, because it has come up again, I want to clarify. I made a motion several meetings back that we take whatever steps were necessary to obtain services of outside counsel. But it was for the sole reason that I thought Town Council would be in an awkward position trying to answer questions for the Planning Board, given the fact that he had given advice to the zoning board. I have since learned that I think the proper procedure would have been for the Planning Board to ask the questions of Town Council and let him decide whether he was uncomfortable answering for us. But I just want to put that motion into the proper perspective. That was the only reason I made that motion, and it was very clearly stated in the motion.
So thank you for clarifying that. So, Mr. Chairman, would it make sense for us to send some sort of memo to our Town Council addressing our concerns, as Mr. Jenks just said?
Yeah, possibly. I think this is part of what we wanted to discuss tonight, that, you know, with the Conservation Commission, because I think they have recently joined our world of having their jurisdiction, you know, stepped on by the ZBA. So let's leave that out there and go back to the Conservation Commission. I know, Mark, you said that you wanted to see how the discussion went tonight relative to a letter that you might be sending along. Or maybe before we get to that, Dan, did you want to clear up any items that were relative to you as a consultant?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify...
Reintroduce yourself and what your role is in this.
Sure. Dan Delaney, I'm a project manager with Fussin' O'Neill. We've been an on-call consultant with the town for about 10 years now. And we do reviews for Planning Board, Conservation and Zoning Board of Appeals, technical reviews based on the applications relevant to the various zoning bylaws. And in the case of the Conservation Commission, the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the stormwater standards. In the case of this project, we were contacted by Mr. Bartolini, I believe, back probably October, November timeframe, and about reviewing on behalf of the ZBA and the comprehensive permit application for Park Central. And we entered into an agreement with the town, as we normally would, similar to other 40B projects that we've done in the past, and began our review right around the Thanksgiving timeframe. And provided, after reviewing, we realized that, you know, as you had mentioned, the plans that were provided at that time, up to that point, were 60, 70% plans, they weren't a full design. The stormwater management system hadn't been fully vetted. There were still a number of outstanding items that needed to be designed. And they hadn't filed MEPA, they hadn't filed, obviously, with the Conservation Commission. So what we did at that point is on December 3rd, we provided a draft letter, basically a here we are at this point letter to the applicant and to the ZBA with about 50 or 60 items relating to the comprehensive permit regulations, a number of other things. The biggest issue, obviously, was the level of design would require further review once they submitted full site plans. At that point, we've basically been in a holding pattern since then. I haven't had much contact, aside from regular check-ins for status, to see where the project was. I'm talking to Beth, Jen, Leo, whoever was involved. We haven't reviewed anything pertaining to any of the waivers or any of the waiver requests. Our only review was the initial letter that we provided on December 3rd. And I know that watching the video of the proceedings that evening, there was reference to Fussin' O'Neill having reviewed some of the details. At that point, we had not reviewed anything pertaining to the waivers themselves. As you know, as you've seen a few of my letters and Amy's and other folks from Fussin' O'Neill's letters, we do typically review the technical merits of the project. For waivers, we would only typically judge them in terms of how they stack up against the bylaw and what's been done recently and allow the Board to make that decision. We typically do not try to steer the Board with respect to waivers. We provide basically the gap between what the plans show and what the regulations require, what has been done recently, and allow the various Boards to make that decision because that's really your decision, not mine. So just to kind of clear that up, our stance at this point is we're still waiting for the final, you know, design plans. I did contact the designer a few weeks ago. We haven't received anything since the initial plans we received around Thanksgiving. So we're waiting to complete our review, and that's where we stand.
So if I heard that correctly, since you're waiting for final plans, is it then Fussin' O'Neill's opinion that it was premature to make those waivers?
Well, I think at this point, there aren't, all the factors in, as far as the site plan goes, hadn't been taken into account in the plans that we've seen to date. I know the last set of plans that we saw was, they were prepared prior to the ANRAD. They were prepared prior to the filing for MEPA. And we haven't seen anything since, so I couldn't say. You know, in my opinion, the plans would likely change as a result of those various factors. So until we have a final site plan, I don't know that you could really see what that site plan's going to look like and then in turn, see what the impacts are and what, you know, what the final plan's going to look like, so.
Thank you.
So, prior, or at the February 24th ZBA meeting, were you aware that waivers were going to be discussed? Was Fussin' O'Neill aware of that?
I was not personally, no. As far as I know, all the correspondence had been through me at Fussin' O'Neill. I wasn't aware of anything new. Like I said, but at that point, we were kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for final plans and drainage calculations.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Sure.
Well, on January 7th of this year, you know, the Planning Board submitted the letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting authorization to retain outside counsel to assist in the review and permitting of the Townhouse Project, which is the 40A project. The Selectmen have this, but the Board has decided to inform the Selectmen, which we did, to take no action on it at this time. The, I mean, we've said this, I don't know how many meetings, that if somebody can show us that the ZBA has the authority to waive and take votes on sections of the zoning code relative to the 40A project and beyond that, which would be the assisted living and the hotel, if somebody can show us that they're authorized to do that, then it would certainly take a lot of effort away from us and we would work as we could advising them, but knowing that they had the authority. But instead, we've been wasting or spending a lot of time trying to find justification for their, you know, taking these votes where they're assuming... for their, you know, taking these votes where they're assuming that they can waive or take the responsibility for these sections of the code. So, I guess I'll put it back to you, Mark. Any questions or comments from your board members and, because we got to, I mean, we don't have to, but I mean, it's a good opportunity for us to figure out what the way forward is, whether it's you separately and the planning board separately, or if there's something that jointly we would want to do.
Neil Hammond?
No. I have no comment, Neil.
Well, I guess, just one member here, I would be in favor of, you know, a joint memo. Just asking to be told what the legal reasoning is, as you described, for applying 40B to the entire project. And if the explanation, you know, is rational, makes sense, as you say, it takes an awful lot of work away from us, makes our lives easier, I would just like to really hear it. As it stands right now, I, it's hard for me to picture how that could work legally, but I'm willing to be taught differently. I don't know if we should be addressing the letter to the, this hypothetical letter to the ZBA or to town council, but whoever would be best able to supply the answer, that would be my preference.
Mr. Jenks?
My lack of knowledge, I'm a little bit concerned about whether we would be overstepping our authority to do a joint letter. I don't, I don't know, I haven't seen any provision in our rules that allow that or call for that. And I would recommend, again, town council's opinion on that before we do it.
Well, to that point, I mean, I don't think there's anything that would prevent you from moving forward with something and we could do the exact same thing. Rather, we have to be joint, we could both do the exact same thing, right? That wouldn't be a joint effort, that would be two parallel efforts, right? But one point, I don't know if, we did get a letter back from the ZBA, the question we asked, right? It was from something to do with private property, right? Do you remember the letter? We asked a question, they sent back, yeah, we had this, I'm working from memory here, Beth, I think Beth read it to us, that we got a letter back from the ZBA. We asked some initial questions and we were told that it was an issue of private property and not, I hate to paraphrase, it sounds silly, but it's almost like, was it access? I don't think it was. Beth, do you remember this?
I don't have it, I don't have it with me.
Do you remember what I'm referencing?
I do.
And do you remember what it said?
I can go get it.
Would you mind? Because I thought it was pretty funny at the time.
Yeah, I don't think it really addressed the issue that we asked.
Oh, okay, all right. So, maybe I'm, I'm working from memory. In the meantime.
Go ahead. You done?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the letter to come back.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Mills?
I think I support Mr. Jenks' suggestion. I mean, I think, well, it sounds like you have the same concerns that we have, just in a different area. I don't think doing a joint memo would be the best approach. If we both did our own specific memos that were citing very similar things, but were specific to each group, I think that, personally, I think I'd be more in favor of that. But I'm definitely glad that we're having this discussion.
Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah. Let's see what I was saying.
Just so that we're following along the same line of discussion here, Mr. Chairman, I personally respectfully disagree with Mr. Mills and Mr. Jenks. I do feel like a joint letter, given that we have a very common situation and, you know, it's the same project, same proponent. I think it would carry more weight if it came from the two bodies jointly voicing, you know, a common concern across two town governmental agencies, just for the sake of having more weight and a little bit more strength, if you will, to our point.
I put the, was it me that said the joint letter? I don't know. But I think if that was discussed, I would feel the same way as you, Jesse, that it might have more weight. But I, after hearing from Mr. Jenks and Mr. Mills, separate letters may have more weight because it's two. We've written letters for the last 15 months and have not really seen any change in or any compliance with our request to, you know, remain within their jurisdiction. So, I do think it's our job, we're an elected board and we must continue to perform our job to the best of our ability. And if that means we have to write even another letter and continue to push toward resolution of what's proper, then that's what we should do, whether it's one letter or a joint letter or. At this point, I'm agreeing with Mr. Jenks and Mr. Mills as far as keeping the letters within our jurisdiction.
But just to jump in on one thing, I think what we were talking about was a letter to town council, not so much another letter to the ZBA at this point, right?
Right. And then we write the letter to town council and we can get, I guess, no response, which is not usually the way town council handles things. He's very, very good at responding. And if he agrees with us, then things need to change. And if he agrees that what's been done so far is okay, then where are we? And that's, that's kind of the world we've been in for the last, you know, several months, hoping that it would get better and yet on February 21st, 24th, having the ZBA entertain a letter that was submitted that night, not on the agenda, no ability for the public or the other boards to see it and to take action on it, it seems to be it's getting worse rather than better.
And additionally, when at said time, the applicant does come in front of the Conservation Commission with a application, a notice of intent, now that the waivers have been, you know, put to a vote and waived, any discussion on those points would be courtesy only. They have no obligation at all to discuss the stormwater management practices as described in a town bylaw or adherence to the 20-foot, you know, additional, you know, no-touch buffer. Now, we have set precedent as a board, Conservation Commission Board, to waive 20-foot no-touch buffers. You know, the Try Your School is an example of that, just to put one out there that is in our own backyard that we know about. And we typically do that after there's been some due diligence done with alternate design considerations and seeing, you know, is there any way to be able to meet the guidelines of the bylaw and still, you know, be able to build the desired footprint, what have you. So, we have those discussions and, you know, it's not one of these things where we dig our heels in and just don't entertain it, you know. We have entertained it from time to time. And it's a discussion that can be healthy to have and, you know, designs can be modified to meet both needs. And with the waivers, you know, being granted, that discussion just won't happen unless there's reconsideration of those waivers.
There's another alternative way to address this is, it's something I did on my own that the other commissioners didn't know, within the last week. I contacted, you may know of this gentleman, Greg Watson, do you know him? He's the manager of comprehensive permit programs at the Mass Housing. I found him online, so I sent him a note, essentially saying, I'm new to this, I'm confused, I don't understand what's going on, right? And he did respond to me today. He sent me back a message that I was more confused about and said he was looking into this proposal. I guess he knew of it, right? I didn't specifically reference Park Central, I just generalized the whole thing, right? And he knew of the project and he was going to look into it and see if it has changed since they had issued what they call a project eligibility. I don't know, are you familiar with that? Yeah. So, he was going, so we made one of, I was asking for him for, you know, can you give me guidance as to how you can extend a 40B into other areas? Because I just didn't know, I just don't know, right? So, that might be another way to look into this, rather than to have to seek legal counsel, is to talk to him and ask him, is this a regular process and is this a valid way of doing business, right? I will, I think I forwarded it to a couple of you, I just sent it tonight to a couple of you on the board already. You have it in your email, right, Dawn and Jesse, because I happen to have their email addresses, emails, right, so.
I was aware of the letter that you sent out.
Yeah.
But the one, the response back today, I didn't check my email.
I didn't get it till 6 o'clock today, so I just sent it right out, so you haven't seen it, right?
Okay. There's a common word, and maybe when we listen to the replay, we can count how many times the word confused, confusing.
Yeah.
It's a common word that everyone seems to be using here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you want, since this is a joint meeting, Mark, do you feel that we should, I'd like to open it up to the, any of the neighbors or the public that would like to comment, if you think that's okay?
It's fine, yeah, sure.
Anyone? Questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Chris Perkins, Wontara Road. We had a, my wife and I, Linda, had a visit with Mr. Purple this last week.
The fan is, hold on a second, Chris.
I appreciate both boards meeting on this. We, in general, we're happy with the compromises that have been made with this project, but our main concern right now is that proper oversight is done, all the permits, that it's done right.
Right. I want to remind everyone that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not really here discussing the merits of the project, discussing the process of the different boards, the town's process, the ZBA's.
Right.
Go ahead.
So, we had to visit Mr. Purple, we were very concerned about the process, as you say, that the ZBA was stomping on the planning board and the Conservation Commission. There's a lot of expertise in this room and I think it would be valuable to the project, to the town, that the expertise that's in this room is used. So, after a discussion with Mr. Purple, he sent us a response, and if I may read this, "I met with both parties later the same day of your visit, the parties being Mr. Bartolini and town council. Mr. Bartolini agreed there should be, have been prior conversation with the conservation about the request of waivers before a vote was taken. He also agreed to send a letter to conservation seeking their input and at the next meeting would ask the ZBA to reconsider its earlier vote on the conservation waivers, given the lack of input from the town departments prior to the decision. I have asked the town council to begin attending the ZBA hearings on this matter again and to ensure that proper process is followed." So, that's that.
Anyone else from the public, neighbors, comments, questions? Well, go ahead, Mark.
I was just retrieving the mic.
Oh, okay. Well, as I stated earlier, we try to have someone from the planning board attend the ZBA meetings. As you know, it's the ZBA's policy, they don't have to do it and obviously, they didn't to form a multi-committee, multi-team of planning board, conservation, other entities in the town when we get one of these 40B projects. This happens to be the largest project in the history of the town and yet, for whatever reason, that working group was never formed. And now, kind of in reverse, we're trying to form that group where the planning board and our conservation and others are trying to assist the ZBA in performing their respective jobs relative to these projects. So, I mean, that's what we have to do. Beyond the overreaching into our authorities, we must continue to, you know, do our jobs that we've been assigned to in the, in our elected or appointed positions. So, I guess we'll continue to attend the meetings and try to learn and assist as much as we can and then push back in areas where we feel that it's, that their actions are improper or not in the best interest of the town or the neighbors or the proponent. Is there any, I mean, in the absence of some specific thing that we plan to do and no other comments, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I was just going to make one comment. Beth Rosenbloom, you know, whispered that the Conservation Commission has not received any letter that, you know, the gentlemen here referred to as of today, with respect to the ZBA, you know, going back and looking back at their vote or, you know, reconsidering their vote. I know they have a meeting this Thursday, I believe, correct? And there is something on the agenda that is talking about waivers, but it's not specific as to what the waivers are. So, I don't know if that is an agenda item to reconsider the waiver vote that they took on the 24th, or these are additional waivers that are being considered. So, to that end, we held a response from the Conservation Commission, as I mentioned earlier, from our last meeting. We do have a draft of that. We are a sitting quorum tonight, so we could, and this is a public meeting, so we could take a vote to go ahead and send that letter if we chose to do so, with the words that are in it or any modification thereof.
Yeah, the reference in the agenda refers to Section 174-25A4, which is comprehensive permits. The Board of Appeals may issue comprehensive permits for publicly subsidized housing as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 21. "The Board of Appeals may issue comprehensive permits for publicly subsidized housing as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 21." So the agenda referral to that section. And only that section would then limit their discussion to 40B. So we get to the meeting and see if it's only going to address the 180-unit 40B project or if it goes beyond that. Is the meeting properly posted?
Yeah, I, you know, I.
Back to the word confusing?
Okay. So as I said, we'll probably convene here in the big boy table or whatever it was called in the corner over there to, to go over the memo that we've drafted to see if it's acceptable to the Conservation Board here and what we want to send back to the ZBA, which basically is asking them to reconsider the waivers that they took, the 174-13.5 and Chapter 170. For reconsideration so that the Conservation Commission does have an opportunity to provide input feedback with respect to the design once we see one. And we can have that level of discussion. Clearly, it's going to be up to them as to whether or not they entertain that request for reconsideration or not. But that's certainly something that we would, we would hope that they would do.
Mr. Jenks?
I thought that's what I heard Mr. Perkins read in the reply from Mark Purple was that the ZBA chair had agreed to, I don't know what technical, what the technicality is to do it, but agreed to ask the board to reconsider those votes. So I think that's going to happen. I would not discourage your letter from saying the same thing, requesting it, that they reconsider them. Because that's just more different people asking. Mr. Purple's response was, if I understood it right, based on a meeting with two town residents. If you ask for the same thing, it's, it's your commission asking them to reconsider the vote. I think that would help.
Yeah, this may not be the time to do it, just a possible addition to the language of our letter, is that something we're gonna discuss later on?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll hold that for now.
Well, thanks, thanks for joining in the discussion and letting us hear from you guys. You're still in session, so, you know, I guess we'll continue with what's left of our agenda, which isn't a whole lot. And then we'll stay in contact relative to any future joint meetings. We're well, willing to certainly attend your meetings if necessary and would always invite you to attend ours on this subject or any other subject. But this is a very, very significant project and, you know, we're very concerned about making sure that it's done right.
As are we, you know, in terms of what we have oversight on. You know, at the end of the day, we, we are a permitting board, not a preventing board, so we just want to make sure that, you know, the permits are done correctly and the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One of the items on the, the next item on our agenda is the Planning Board's position on Article 29, the multifamily housing for the elderly. Did you want to speak on that initially, Mr. Jenks?
This is on the wording of the zoning.
It's the removal of that, of the, of the, the language relative to over 55.
Privately owned.
Privately owned, yes. And the issue there is, is the zoning code allowed to address ownership? And use or just use? Mr. Jenks?
I, I gather that's not an issue, at least it is not in my mind. I, I think that's a ruling made by a judge and seems compatible with zoning variances, for instance. Cases I've read that say you can't grant a variance and make it conditioned upon particular ownership. So, I mean, that, that sounds consistent. Clear up the motion that we are voting on or that we're discussing? And is that to include that zoning change proposal on the warrant article? I mean, on the warrant? Or is, or are we voting on whether or not we will support that?
The article is in the town warrant.
It's in it, okay.
And unless somebody pulls it, it will go on the floor and be read as a motion and hopefully seconded. And then if the discussion leads to an amendment or a request to indefinitely postpone or request to pull it, there's various different things that can happen, but it is in the town warrant and it will be put on the town, town meeting floor, just like any other warrant. And in this case, because it's relative to zoning, the Planning Board held a public hearing. And we're expected, I think, as elected officials, to do our job and, and give the public our opinion as to what we think about the warrant article. Same as any other zoning article or planning article. So in this case, the Planning Board, we're not compelled to vote, but I think we should, we usually do relative to warrant articles for zoning. And so that came up at our previous meeting. And I think you were given a homework assignment to ask a question of Town Council. And, and then at some point, either tonight, we meet again on the 28th, we meet again on the 4th, there's an opportunity for us to vote. If it's the board's desire to vote tonight, we can do that. And our vote just tells the public what we think about it and gives the public an opportunity to question on the, on the town meeting floor, you know, why we voted how we did, how we, how we didn't vote. If it's a five to zero vote in favor, why do you think it's, why do you think it's a good thing? If it's five against or if it's split, then we could be asked for our explanation as to why we voted the way we did. And that would help the public who may not have spent as much time, you know, looking at the article, may help them decide as to how they vote. And that's about it. Even if we vote completely against it, doesn't mean it, it won't pass and if we vote for it, doesn't mean that it will pass. Mr. Mills?
Just one point on that. Since Kathy's not here, I assume we're not gonna vote tonight.
Well, if that's your choice, we'll ask everybody if we, if, how we want to do that. I just know that Kathy's not here on the 28th or the 4th. We normally post a, a Planning Board meeting around six o'clock on the night of the town meeting so that if there's any unfinished business, we have an opportunity to conduct that.
Okay.
And then pass that on to the town meeting as, as to how we finished up the business or that we didn't and this is the reason why we didn't. So I guess there'd be an opportunity for us to vote, not next Monday or the Monday after, but in our usual short, just before the town meeting, Planning Board meeting, which is usually at the Triade School.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the public?
Sure.
Again? Mr. Stein, did you have anything at this point?
I think I previously, at the last meeting, I stated my position on this. I am in favor of pulling the article on the basis that the dictum is derived from a case that's still pending in the courts. And, yeah, I would just feel more comfortable moving forward after that case is settled.
That's why I was asking for clarification of the vote. I think the issue before us is do we support or not support? I, I don't know that we've got an issue before us of pulling that article.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you had said a few, a moment ago, unless someone pulls it. What would be the mechanism to pull it?
After the motion is read at the town meeting, it still goes to the town meeting. Article 29 is next and they call on somebody to read the article, read the motion. I moved it to town delete from these different sections, the language, and then somebody seconds it. At that point, the person that made the motion could.
Okay, so there is no opportunity to pull it at this time?
No, it's gonna go, no, it's, it's gonna go forward.
I think, Jesse, there's the opportunity, once it's read, could immediately said.
Indefinitely postpone.
Indefinitely postpone. The issue is if it actually goes to vote and it got voted down, we'd have to wait two years before we could put it on again. So, I mean, whether you pull it or we say we indefinitely postpone it, or, you know, we let it go through the way it is. I mean, that, there's, there's an option at that point. My only concern was, I know Kathy has a very strong position and I just don't think it would be fair to her. And yes, Kathy, you know, waving to you, I know you're watching. You know, that if we were to take a position without her here.
I fully agree with that, Mr. Mills.
I wasn't implying that you weren't.
I was definitely not.
I just wanted to make sure she knew what.
I was definitely not suggesting that we would move forward on anything without Mr. Bartolini's input. I just wanted to know exactly, logistically, what it is we were discussing. And clearly, it's simply our position as a board on the bylaw. Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you. Sam Stivers, Seven Presidential Drive, member of the Advisory Commission, speaking at least for now as a private citizen. I was interested in the conversation at the last Planning Board meeting about the dictum and it made me curious. And so I actually went and I actually found the decision that created the dictum. I don't know if the board members have actually read this, but it turns out there's more to the dictum than the board was talking about last time. There are two parts to it. One is that the judge found this part of this language invalid from an enforcement standpoint. Second, though, he found that the ZBA actually had the authority to issue this permit. So in fact, the dictum is, includes the fact that the ZBA can issue the permits. Therefore, it would seem that there's sort of no harm, no foul at this point and that it's not, the language as it stands now is not preventing the ZBA, according to this judge at least, from doing exactly what they did. So it would, again, seem to me that it allows some time for fixing the issue in a more comprehensive, global way versus trying to make this change that I believe personally has some unintended consequences out there. I actually have some different views in terms of whether that's ultimately correct or not, but in fact, I think that there is, at least in my view, based on the complete dictum, if you're, if you believe in the philosophy of the dictum here, I think you gotta take the whole thing instead of just the first part of it. So it seems to me, again, that there is no rush to get this done and a variety of these issues around this point, I think, suggest for more caution than haste in this particular effort. And I, again, don't believe there's a compelling need to actually address this at this point. Another small point of information is that Advisory actually discussed this at their most recent meeting and voted unanimously to not support this particular article, FYI. So, thank you.
Sam, did the, did you, did the Advisory list any reasons why they don't want to support it?
A lot of the same things that I think Mr. Stein and Mr. Jenks were talking about at the last planning meeting in terms of the ongoing legal case. And, you know, is there a need for it? And it seems like a rush to get something done when a lot of people don't seem to understand all the implications of it. So more questions, uncertainty than clarity that, wow, this is something that really is important to do right now.
Did you discuss all our articles or just that one?
Yeah, all articles. We actually went through the entire article list and voted to support or not support most of them and there were a handful that we voted to, to address at town meeting where things were still not fully discussed at this point. So, for example, the marijuana articles need to be discussed more. I think the, the open space road things, we deferred to town meeting, but the bulk of the articles, we voted either support or not support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Road, member of the Open Space Preservation Commission, although I'm speaking for myself. Also, in the interest of full disclosure, I am one of the plaintiffs in the case that is being referred to in which we appealed a decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Two things. This decision from this judge was issued a year ago and it didn't show up on a planning board agenda until February. In their, in the 2004 and 2008 master plan, it was stated that this bylaw, this over 55 bylaw, has not worked as it was intended and it needs to be fixed. In both of those master plans, it suggested that affordability requirements be added to it. So I don't, so just taking out this one sentence isn't going to address the issue that this bylaw has not worked as intended. And the rush to do that, as Mr. Stivers mentioned, doesn't seem to be necessary because what the judge said was what the ZBA did was fine and things can stay the way that they are. And to the issue of zoning not being able to regulate ownership, we have appealed this decision. Chapter 40A, Section 9, which addresses special permits, specifically says that you can limit uses on special permit. And that's one way to, to limit use. And if you can't address ownership, how could you have over 55s? Isn't that regulating ownership to people over 55? So I wouldn't support this article.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jenks?
At the, near the end of our last meeting, I think you asked if the board would accept a letter from your attorney explaining the appeal. And I understand we did not receive such a letter. Do you know if that's on its way? Do you know if that's on its way or...
I didn't finish the letter. I, our attorney didn't want to write the letter, so he said he would let, I could write something and he would review it. I haven't gotten his review back. I didn't realize that this was on this agenda until late last week.
Angelo Catanzaro and I represent Mr. De Petri in the appeal that Mr. Latrell was just speaking of, and I'm not going to go into the details of the appeal, but they did appeal the special permit that was granted to Mr. De Petri for the age-restricted project on Oregon Road. The land court dismissed their appeal, essentially ruling that the, the plaintiffs didn't have standing to bring the appeal. That was the, the, the essential ruling. There was a secondary ruling that the underlying bylaw was unlawful, okay, for the reasons that she had stated, okay, because it attempted to regu, to impose a regulation of zoning based on ownership rather than other permitted criteria. And right now, that matter is before the appeals court, because they further appealed it to the appeals court. So in very brief conversations that I've had about the, about the proposed article, it is my understanding, and we had nothing to do with the article, in fact, I did not even know about it till about two or three weeks ago, that I guess Aldo Cipriano was attempting to fix the problem by having a new zoning bylaw to replace the, the bylaw that the land court has opined was unconstitutional. So in summary, that's what the case is all about. I don't know what the appeals court is going to do with it. I can tell you that the land court wrote a very strong opinion, both on standing and on his view, the judge's view, of the unconstitutionality of your bylaw. And so, you know, I would think that the town would want to address that issue.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on, on that? So is it the board's desire to not vote tonight?
Yes, mine at least. Jesse? Don't you want to wait for Kathy?
Yes, we should wait.
Oh, thank you.
So that means that we would probably put it on our agenda for the town meeting, the first night of the town meeting. It's usually a six o'clock, 6:15, 6:30-ish planning board meeting in the band room. Mr. Jenks?
The articles in the warrant typically say, supported by, or, or a planning board supports, or doesn't support, or will make its position known at town meeting. This has already gone to the printer, I assume. Do you know what it says?
I think it's silent, but normally the moderator will, will call on the, you know, selectmen, and then the selectmen will say, "Selectmen support," call on the planning board, "Planning board support," and so on.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we're going to take our position the night of town meeting, I assume that if, if more information were to come in to Hillary, we would be provided that before that meeting?
Oh, yeah, and I think that's the, one of the benefits of, again, we don't have to vote, but I think we should. And so we, we'll try it on that night, and again, we, we'll have the benefit of a couple more weeks of, of opportunity to get more information, if there is any.
Thank you.
Seconds, Sam?
Quickly to answer Mr. Jenks' question, the, the actual printed version of the warrant, at least, was distributed to a variety of folks today, and that says it's sponsored by the planning board, but it lists, "Selectmen support, advisory not support." That's all it says in there now that will be printed for the public at town meeting.
Thank you.
Right, and it's important to note that because it's a zoning article, the planning board presents the article, but not, doesn't necessarily support it. And again, we've stated before that there's been articles that the planning board has put in the town warrant and voted five to zero against. It's just that the, the planning board is the platform for zoning articles. Like, for example, I'm going to go into this next item that I don't think we've voted on yet. So is there anything else on that? Mr. Jenks?
I would like to ask Attorney Catanzaro. Did, did you say the language that was found to be unenforceable is part of the appeal? That's being appealed?
Correct. The decision of the court, okay, found against the plaintiffs for two reasons. One, lack of standing. Now typically, okay, the court could have ended right there. If you don't have standing, you had no right to go further with the appeal. But for some reason, this land court judge entered a further opinion as to the constitutionality of the underlying zoning bylaw, which he thought was unconstitutional. So that does give these plaintiffs the opportunity to, I guess, litigate both of those issues in the appeals court.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else on this item? Go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the planner's report. So as part of that report, I would just want to go over the, our, our next meeting is Monday, March 28th, which is a week from tonight. We have three public hearings. Citizens petition number one, citizens petition number two, and citizen petition number three relative to the medical marijuana bylaw. Again, the planning board is the platform for those public hearings for these proposed zoning changes. Planning board has not voted to support or not support on these. We're waiting for the public hearing, where the proponents will present the information and inform the planning board and the public as to the details of these proposed changes and also the, the merits. And then after the public hearing, then the people will have an opportunity to, to state whether or not they support them at the town meeting, and the planning board at that, at next week's meeting or subsequent meetings would have an opportunity to vote as to whether or not we support. So that's coming. There's, at the same time, let's see, it was a week ago on Friday, I think, the, the proponent for 255 Turnpike Road submitted what's called a perimeter plan. It's an approval not required, and it's essentially a perimeter plan. And that means that it's the same as an, as an approval not required plan in that it meets all the zoning requirements for that zone, and yet, the, the proponent isn't changing anything. The, the lot line remains exactly the same, there's no subdividing it, there's no alteration at all. It's a, it's called a perimeter plan, and we don't see those too often. So Hillary looked up at, in the Commonwealth website, and there's a section, Grandfathered Lots and Plan Protections. And in it, Section 3, Section 2C says perimeter plans. And I'm going, I'm going, I'm just going to go through this a little bit quickly because it's coming up, like I said, at next week's meeting, and those of us in the public who want to learn a little bit more about what the proponent is, is submitting, I can say it now, and then we can also have the week to learn more about it if we want. So it's here, perimeter plans. A perimeter plan is a plan of land showing existing property lines with no new lines drawn indicating a division of land, and is usually filed so that the property owner can obtain the three-year freeze afforded approval-not-required plans. Perimeter plans are entitled to ANR endorsement. And then it refers to a, a court case, and that's it. That's the whole section. So those of us who may want to learn more about perimeter plans or why the proponent is submitting it, you're welcome to look, look that up, but we, we've reserved, we've tried to reserve next week's meeting. We actually inserted it in between our other two regularly scheduled meetings, just so that we could have these public hearings and that the, it would be on a single topic, which is the medical marijuana. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that the three-year freeze, basically freeze from changes in the zoning code, applies only to the use of the property. That, the ANR freeze in a, on a perimeter plan does not protect the plan from any, like, setback or parking requirements or anything like that. It's strictly the use.
Thank you. I, I think any information we get that clarifies what the perimeter plan is will help us understand it so that we can be ahead of the curve next week when this comes before us, because I think there's probably going to be some questions on it. In a related matter under the planner's report, we were given a business certificate, Town of Selpro, for a, a new business called Fun, with then an exclamation point, Dementals, 26 Clifford Road, and the type of business says Recreation Program. And this was submitted by Marnie Houlihan as the corporate officer, if corporate officer signature, Residence 26 Clifford Road, and it was received and stamped by the planning department on the 21st, and it was signed by the town clerk on March 18th. So that's a, a public record. And then there was a letter attached to it, Fundamentals Recreation Program, dated March 18th, and the letter is to the Selpro Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Selectment, Town Manager, and Selpro Planning Board. This letter is to inform the town that Fundamentals Recreation Program in Selpro opened on February 4th, 2016. This recreation program is located on 26 Clifford Street, Selpro. We are obligated to advise town committee members that special permit application submitted by Comcan at 255 Turnpike Road, Selpro, Mass. for a medical marijuana, or an MMD would be in violation of the Selpro zoning 174.9 Special Permit Regulation document, Section J. Medical Marijuana, 2, 3 states that a registered marijuana dispensary shall not be located not less than 500 feet from a recreation facility. As defined in C, for purposes of this 174-9J, following term, terms shall have the meanings ascribed. Recreation facility, a park, playground, forest, preserve, conservation area, running trail, or track, hiking trail, beach, wading pool, soccer field, baseball field, football field, basketball court, hockey rink, dance, or gymnastics studio, whether publicly or privately owned, to which the public has a right of access as an invitee. And it's submitted sincerely Aaron Wheatley, Paul Murphy, 22 Clifford Street, Marnie Houlihan, 24 Clifford, oh, Kevin Houlihan, 26 Clifford Street. And there's a, a bio attached, I'm not going to go into all of that, but just letting us know and the public know that this has been submitted. It's public record. The town clerk has it, we have it in our office in the planning department. So April 4th, March 28th is the next meeting, then April 4th, we have things on that agenda. And then after town meeting, our abbreviated meeting then, and then the following planning board meeting would be April 25th.
I may be able to make March 28th. Depends on when I can get, have to get my son back to school. So I might, I might be present for that one, but the 4th, I definitely won't be here.
Phil, you here the 28th?
Yes, sir.
Jesse? Yeah. The, the, the letter, there was a letter submitted by Mr. Giblin to the planning board, and also an, another letter to the Board of Selectment relative to the warrant article for the open space property on, off of Richards Road. Are you gentlemen aware of those letters? They were just, just submitted, I think, on, I think it was Friday. So I have them here someplace, but the first letter, and these letters were submitted after I've, I've had conversations with Mr. Giblin, just going over what the options are relative to the warrant article for the town to accept that open space. And the, one of the letters requests that the warrant article be pulled because the plan now, or the desire is to have that open space go to a third party and not to the town. And so there's a request in to pull, pull the article. And then there's also a statement that the current owner, which is Mr. Giblin, is in the process of obtaining that third party with credentials and a plan for accepting the property and then managing it in this, in the same fashion as originally approved, only it would be done instead of by the town, it would be managed and maintained by the third party. So that, there's still more information to be submitted to firm up our decision, I believe, our decision to recommend that the article not go forward. So again, it would be read at the town meeting floor, and then if all of the necessary information was provided, then we would have a basis to make a decision as to whether to pull the article with confidence that it was actually going to go to a third party. And if we don't have that information and we don't feel confident, or if we just don't agree, then it can go forward for the town meeting's vote, which if, if it doesn't carry, then it still may go to a third party. So that's, there's some action on, on that item. And I'll ask Hillary to make sure that she sends you copies of those two notes. Mr. Mills?
Is he asking, requesting that just on his own, or has he reached out to other parties for that? Like, was it in the decision that it was supposed to be accepted by the town? Is he now asking for site plan revision? Like, just curious. Is that something Hillary can look into before we discuss that?
I actually just found the, the letters. They happen to be right in front of me. They happen to be right in front of me. This one's to, it's from Brendan Properties, and it's to Chairman Morris and members of the Planning Board. Please accept this letter as my formal request to have the acceptance of Richards Road Open Space withdrawn from the warrant article for the Springtown meeting. I'm in the process of selecting a conservation trust to accept title to the parcel, and will, within the next two to five weeks, provide a copy of the trust documents and a draft deed for review and acceptance by your board. Upon approval, the deed will be recorded with the registry of deeds. So if it's in two weeks, then we wouldn't be able to hold a public hearing, wouldn't be enough time to hold a public hearing to modify the approved subdivision and change the language from that the open space will go to the town, change it from that to say that the open space will go to this conservation trust. But if we get sufficient information to give us a level of trust that this will actually happen, then we might decide to, you know, pull the article.
Okay.
And then the letter to the selectmen? Actually, it's to the chairman of the Planning Board, town, well, he's got Mark Purple, town planner, his town administrator, and town council. Pretty much summarize it. I'm happy to implement this recommended alternate solution in deeding this land into a conservation trust so that the land remains as open space in perpetuity as originally intended by the parties when the subdivision was approved.
Is that, I know you said we just got this. Is it something we could have Hillary forward to the Open Space Commission, too? Because I'd be interested in their opinion personally.
Sure.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak at the microphone?
Mimi Latrell, Open Space Preservation Commission. We, the Open Space Preservation Commission did have a meeting last Tuesday and did discuss this parcel. And we came up with two options for it, both which would require modification of the subdivision. One would be to carve off that piece in question, that farm dump, for lack of a better technical term, and leave that in its current ownership and have the town accept the remaining parcel. Or the second option would be, as Mr. Giblin recommended, to have a third party take it, although a conservation restriction would have to be placed on it in order to assure that it remained in open space in perpetuity as required by the bylaw.
On the part, no, I'm mixing the two. Never mind.
Okay.
So if I kind of read between the lines there, it sounds like you're in favor of postponing it until, because it doesn't sound like we're going to get a resolution before town meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it's ready for prime time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, more to follow, more information to follow. But it's, you know, it's moving forward in one direction or another. So if there's nothing else on that one, move on to the approval of minutes. We have, I think there's four in here.
Is that, are we going to table that because Kathy's not here?
We don't have to. She, the ones that are in our packet are marked up in red. Mr. Jenks, if, I hate to keep pushing these off. We do meet next week and the week after. So if the board is ready to vote on any or all of these, entertain a motion for any one of them. Or if it's your desire to spend more time on these marked up versions, we got to make it a priority at our next meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the January 6th meeting as submitted as before us.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Stein has a set of minutes that does not show the revisions that I proposed.
Since I wasn't there, I can't have more mine.
I have seen this. This was in our packet.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what we're voting on.
That, I was voting, excuse me. I was, I meant this one.
Is that the one that you've seconded, Mr. Jenks?
Sure is.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero. Very good. That's the January 6th one. Destiny? And one abstention, because Mr. Mills was not in, at that meeting. We have the January 25th, February 11th, and February 22nd. Any movement on those?
I can tell you that I did not review the February 22nd because I was not at that
Destiny, do you have Kathy's notes? I know she said there were specific questions she had on some of these, but you don't have?
I have, what do I do with them? You looking at the, it was a yellow, yellow sheet. Was that? Yeah, what's the date on that? No, I know. Yeah, yeah. That's separate than what he's talking about.
Yes.
Let's move these to the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have time to jump on them on the 28th. So the meeting on the 28th, there's a draft agenda here. It does show the three public hearings, the A and R for the perimeter plan. And then it has the Planner's Report, Approval of Minutes, and then Discussion of the Citizens' Petition, and then Discussion of the Park Central Waiver Requests. That agenda might change, but since it's already on there as a draft, approval of minutes, then we can move in that direction. Anything else? I don't think there's anything else on.
We have to sign those.
Right.
Bylaws.
I have a, I have a question on the Canes Crossing project. Do you anticipate that there's any board involvement in that?
Planning Board?
Planning Board for permitting?
The zoning enforcement officer, his opinion is that the Planning Board has to issue a special permit. Forget the section. The section that's referenced refers to the residential A District. And so it's gone to the ZBA to determine if that special permit, or the ZBA has to issue a special permit that allows it to be enforced or utilized in the residential B District, the same as if it was a residential A District, because section in the RB District is silent. Although I believe at previous meeting, you stated at the very beginning of that section of the code, it says whatever applies in A shall also apply in B.
It does.
But from what I understand, it's still before the ZBA for what the zoning board, I mean, the zoning enforcement officer has decided is a necessary special permit. But if the ZBA says, no, we don't need to issue it, then I believe that Canes Crossing will then come before us for a special permit.
What I'm reading on this is if it is housing, multifamily housing for the elderly, the ZBA is the only board that can issue the special permit for that. If it is other multifamily housing, then it's Planning Board under the Major Residential
I have the code here if you want to.
That's what I'm reading. Yeah, I've got it here, too. What section is that, Phil? Well, they're going to file under 174-9H. But that refers them to the Use Regulations. And that's where the residential B District says anything allowed in the residential A District is also allowed in the B. And the, in the residential A District, under the Uses, that's in 174-8.2. This gets into the wording that we're talking about striking from the zoning code that is owned by a public or a nonprofit community housing organization. But if you look, do you see 8.2B?
Yep.
Number eight under that says multifamily housing for the elderly. And then if, just scratch the rest of that wording, but that's a ZBA special permit. Right under it, number nine, is other multifamily dwellings. In other words, not for the elderly. And that's a Planning Board. So I'll leave it that you can look at it and agree or disagree. But it seems to me that if they're coming in under the housing for the elderly, multifamily housing for the elderly, it's the zoning board's ballgame. And in that regard, makes me want to revisit the vote we took at the last meeting about calculating the 7%. Because if it is a zoning board issue, our vote doesn't mean anything on that. But something you can look at.
Well, the reason we voted at the last meeting was based on a request, an email request from the zoning enforcement officer to the Planning Board, asking for our opinion relative to how that number was arrived at. And the reason he was asking the Planning Board is because the town planner developed that number from the primary number that was given by the assessor's office. And then there's a calculation that has to be done. So he asked us to verify, since the town planner isn't here anymore, if we agree with that number. So I drafted that letter, which we all looked at and showed how the number was arrived at. And then we voted to see if we agreed with what was in the letter. And we voted to say that we agreed with what was in the letter. Doesn't necessarily mean, what we voted for was basically to confirm to the zoning enforcement officer that there's 11.6 units available. And here's how they were calculated. That's what we voted on. Now, whether or not that applies to Canes Crossing or anything else, that wasn't in the letter. It was just how the calculation was done.
Okay.
And that was the basis of our vote, of our vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Any other business? Anybody other questions? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. Thank you.